Call the January 14, 2019 USD 350 Board of Education meeting. Door. Um, hopeful visitor?
Thank you.
Any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yeah, and request we add a business item number four for the traffic study. For information and discussion.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. President, I move the board approve the agenda as presented, or as amended.
Right. It's moving second at the board approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those nay? Motion carried, seven zero. The consent agenda?
I have nothing unusual to report.
Anything on that?
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's moving second at the board approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those nay? Motion carried. Seven zero. Are there any patron comments this evening? Move on into the business agenda. Item number one, principal contracts.
We've got no issues with Mr. White's contract. This is, it's a two-year contract, so we'd be considering rolling it over for a further two years, for next year and then the following year. I did add, kind of like we did with my contract, it wasn't real clear on this one, but that, you know, upon resignation or retirement, he's paid out his sick days, just like we do for the teachers. So, really the change is here, ten days of paid sick leave, as outlined in the negotiated agreement, and just added that item six is what outlines that from the teacher's contract. So, I think that's fair to do that. So, no actions required. I feel good about the contract. I can give you a quick update on any, anything to do with his performance in executive session.
Any other questions about Mr. White's contract? All right. Item number two, next year's calendar.
We have next year's calendar shown on page twenty-one here. You know, we haven't gone through the whole year, so it's hard to say if things work out okay, but really, with half of the year, we're, we've got a committee together and we're considering, right now we have on the calendar three days that we have early dismissal. We don't feel, we need some professional development every month, but we don't want to take a whole day, so we just take a couple hours in the afternoon. We're considering switching that to an early, or a late start rather than an early dismissal. A one o'clock dismissal would start at ten o'clock. We miss so much time in the afternoon for junior high and high school, for ball games or other activities that they leave for, then we throw in three more days where we, we shut down school a couple hours early. We think that'd be better maybe in the morning. Also, with the way our schedule is laid out, if we do that late start, we can condense the schedule for the upper grades where they can actually get in every hour, it's just maybe shorter, and we can work with that, with the shared staff between elementary and high school, where we can't do that now, we just, it's just not a way to do it, the way we share staff, so. One thing that may come up, you know, if a family has to find daycare, they can find that at one o'clock, and they just stay till the end of the day, whereas if I've got to find daycare from eight to ten, then get them to school at ten, and we still have to have daycare after school, that could, that could create an issue. But, just one thing we're looking at. Also, we need to add two professional development days at the beginning of the calendar. We're implementing our new student information system at our school. It's going to take two days of training. We just don't have the room, we have so much we need to get through, as far as sexual harassment, training, all that compliance stuff, that we're full. So, we'll need to add another couple of days, we'll just go, you know, we wouldn't change the start date or anything, we'd just change the start date for teachers, but they would obviously want paid for those extra days, as far as the contract, so that we would need to work through with negotiations. Spring break, we're looking at roughly the same week as compared to this year. Next year it matches up with Barton County, does not match up with Fort Hayes or K U or K State. I think Fort Hayes and K State are different next year, so there won't be any consistency there moving forward with the board of regents, so. Any comments or things on the way the calendar is now that don't work, or things you've heard me say that you've got concerns about, suggestions? Well, we'll work through that with our teacher committee and district leadership team, get some input from our site council, from parents that way. So, I don't know if it'll be next month, or it'll be yet another month before we get it all ready to approve, but it'll be fairly similar, other than the changes I said we're kind of looking at. Anything else on that?
I really like that, late start as opposed to, as opposed to early dismissal.
Any concern with breakfast in the morning?
Um, yeah, I mean, there are, and there, we usually don't have complaints about, you know, if we do a late start because of weather, but it is a concern, and we may, we may be able to work something in where it can come at nine, we just have to pay a few, a few of our aides to come in during that time, and allow the kids that want to come in. So, yeah, that is another, another concern.
It's okay. Item three, classified staff sick leave, action item?
Can I back up one second? One other thing about the early dismissal days are junior high and, and some high schoolers when we have practice, and they get out at one o'clock, what do they do from one to three twenty when we have practice? So, sometimes kids are wandering around, you know, waiting in the school for practice, so that's another issue with that, early dismissal. But, anyway, our classified sick leave, our certified teachers, as part of the negotiated agreement, they have a sick leave bank, that's outlined in, in the contract, which is on page twenty-two, that's just a section that talks about sick and disability leave, that's item number three on there that talks about how that works. Teachers can choose to donate days, the board donates fifteen days, there's a maximum of ninety days in that bank. Each year, we use maybe two days, maybe three days, maybe zero days since I've been here, so really if the board is, is adding fifteen days, we're maxed out every year. So, so we've had ninety days in there since I've been here, and we've just used a handful of days. We may want to clean this up a little bit, the language, it's kind of up to a committee of teachers and the principal to determine whether it's okay for that person that's requesting it to use those days. So, there's really no clear guidelines, just their feeling of, is this somebody abusing it, or is an excuse legit, is it a real need, or how many days can they use, can they use all ninety? That's, that's a lot of days to be using, but, but that brings me to the, the point of the discussion is with our classified staff, we do have one of our custodians currently that is almost out of sick and vacation leave, that will be on extended absence, don't know if she will come back, but how we work through that, I've talked to our auditor and KSB attorneys, their suggestions, don't, don't create a sick leave bank, create a donation policy. So, if individuals want to donate their own sick leave to another individual, they can do that. So, I've looked at a lot of different policies, government, private businesses that have those policies, and none of them really had a maximum days that could be used, but I think it's important that we do that. Also, we don't want an individual giving up all of their sick days for somebody else, and then now we have to donate to that person and create a need for that person, so. The two main things, I guess, with the policy that we're recommending here is that it has to do with a personal medical emergency, has to be a severe situation, illness, injury, some medical emergency that would, would cause somebody to lose, lose some time, and we define that as substantial loss of income as twenty-four hours, so it's going to be at least three full workdays that they, that they would stand to lose before we can consider that. We don't want people just using that because, had the flu and I used too many days. And, an individual can only use up to four weeks of that time, and an individual can only donate up to ten percent of the leave time that they have accrued. So, we allow them to donate, to accumulate ninety days, is that right, for classified staff as well?
Mm-hmm.
So, the max would be of nine days for one individual, so, almost two weeks of pay there, so. So, it could be that, that four weeks could be, could add up pretty quick, as far as people wanting to donate. That puts it on the individuals also to see, determine if there's a need, and they feel there's a need, they can donate their time, not, let's have a bank there that somebody has some arbitrary rules to decide who gets it and who does not. And then we turn together some forms here, some simple forms, if I want to donate, here's what I want to donate, I sign off that I understand. If the ladies feel comfortable with how that will work in the office, it'd be fairly simple to, to do. Then we can revisit in July if it's, if it's a problem. You know, this will be a cost to the district, and it is. On one hand, you know, we pay out sick leave, for teachers, we pay them twenty dollars a day if they're above the maximum, or when they retire, whereas now we would be paying, you know, a full day's work rather than twenty days, or if somebody ends up using all their leave time, you know, it'd end up being a wash, but likely it would create a little bit of cost, but for our lowest paid employees, I think this is important protection for them, something that might help get them through to long-term disability, which is provided through capers and the retirement system.
Is this, if we've got on it tonight, is this ready to go into effect?
Any thoughts on the proposal? I didn't realize how much of this there was out there, frankly, when I researched it, there was a lot. Places doing this.
KSB recommended what you put together?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She said it was a simple deal to do, and she, we put together these forms, she said just simple board action would be appropriate. She didn't recommend putting a maximum on it, but I feel more comfortable knowing that we have a limit of days. You know, we have short-term disability policies that are available to folks if they need them, that they're there for. It's tough for some folks to afford it, too.
Well, this is a way for coworkers to help when tragedy strikes, illness. So.
I think it's a good thing.
What happens, just for clarification, let's say I'm a teacher and I donate nine days to our current custodian who's, who's in the hospital. If she doesn't end up having to take it, what happens to those days?
We spell that out there, it's prorated, so we put it in a bank, and we know who's donated, who's donated how many days, so if they use half of it, I guess the easy way to think of it, if she uses half of what's available, what's been donated, and then she comes back to work, then you would get back half of your days that you donated.
Okay.
So, so we just prorate that, give everybody's leave time back.
I guess that.
Does everybody think?
I hope it's good.
I do, too.
Mr. President, I move the board approve the classified sick leave donation policy as presented.
Second. It's moving second at the board approve the classified sick leave donation policy as presented. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those nay? Motion carried, seven zero. All right. Item number four, traffic study.
I sent this to you on Friday, I just got it Friday from Lisa, was able to read through it, and what, what this was is that the city actually had to commission it, but we had talked to the city and the, about doing this, the concerns, you know, with our safe routes to schools, we put sidewalks in for the city, and what about the traffic situation around the school? It's just kind of a mess, and if, they came out and observed, this is all a deal done through Kansas Department of Transportation, they have a program where, on a limited basis, you can get some free analysis, and that's what this was, the city didn't have to pay anything, this, this was all free. So, they came and looked at, I guess, two primary concerns, is all the four-way stops around, and then just what about the pick-up and drop-off, and the bus traffic, and the pedestrian crossings, all of those things, it's just a mess. If you've ever been around, after-school is the main concern. You know, we've got people that, that pull up in the middle of the street and they stop, and they let the kids out or pick their kids up, you know, we'll have people pull up and going this way, and wave to their kids to come across the street, and without constant policing, that stuff, that stuff just goes on, and, so, is there a better setup for, for the pick-up and drop-off, particularly over by the elementary office and the library? And then the other part was all the four-way stops, are they necessary? So, those are the two things, this is a map of that area over there. Wait with me, I can pull it up on another map where you can see. Let's see it as it exists now, without the recommendation. So, right now, to get you oriented, there's a playground, and then the angled parking out in front of the playground, how it exists now. We have a crosswalk there, that comes to this sidewalk, which is horrible, it's almost invisible. So, we have a lot of people just stop here, and kids run across here, this crosswalk is almost never used during that time period, the drop-off times. People will stop here, behind cars, wait for their kids, so if you have somebody that's pulled in a slot to get, pick up their kid, they're trapped in there. Now, they are breaking the law by parking in the street and blocking traffic. This area is defined as a pick-up and drop-off only, but we will have people pull in there, get out and go into school, so it's meant to be, you can stop here to pick up your kid, but we're not leaving the vehicle, but, and then parallel parking along here. We don't have a crosswalk here frequently, and they mentioned that in their observations, that lots of people walk across here to get over to this parking lot. Almost nobody walks all the way down to the crosswalk and across, and why is that? Well, they don't feel they're in danger. We're not handing out jaywalking tickets, I don't think we should, but traffic is slow enough there that people just feel comfortable. Just worried that someday, something's going to happen with two-way traffic there and kids running across the street with the permission of their parents. So, what have they proposed for that area? Would be to make a, and we asked them about one way, that's kind of how this all came to be. We had talked to Mel a few years ago, when he was the city superintendent, about what if we would make that one way and make that easily controlled, and maybe even add some parking with more angled parking. And he said, I think it's a good idea, but we can't just go in and do that. You know, if something were to happen, an accident were to happen, we would want some, why did you decide to do that? Well, we just thought it was a good idea. Maybe getting a traffic engineer involved to suggest something like that would be a better solution to, you know, to cover the district and the city. So, what they've proposed is making, taking out all that angled parking here, and just making that a pick-up and drop-off lane. And, all of this across here would become angled parking, you'd actually move the lanes that way a little bit. I'm not convinced there's enough room there, but on their analysis, they feel it is, and then I've calculated some of that, and I think maybe there is, but you'd have angled parking here and across from the Wade's house, you'd still have the parallel parking, but then you'd have two lanes of traffic. So, this is not one way, this is two-way traffic, and this would, you know, give us a more of a pick-up and drop-off lane, where we don't have people stopping in the street as much, and then moving this crosswalk a little closer to where people actually use it. They even suggest these curb extensions, it would make that stand out a little more, I'm not sure that all that's needed.
But there would not be a crosswalk or walk to the north at all?
I think we'd have to.
Say, Dave, there's no one there?
Yeah, because there's a sidewalk here, where does it go? It has to go somewhere. And I think you would be hard-pressed to get people that want to come this way to come across there. And there is an issue a little bit with having a crosswalk right there, and parking that back out into that crosswalk, so you'd have to give some buffer there, but. So, one question I would like to ask them is, that's one of them, is adding that crosswalk, but still, how about making this one way, and it just all comes this way, and all this angled parking would be the other way? And we might even be able to get angled parking here in front of the library, and add some more parking closer to the building, but I don't think you could add angled parking here if this was two-way, if you have to have two lanes of traffic.
Surely, that's confusing if it's one way, or everybody flow one way, everybody sees what's going on in your day.
Right, right. And that's a concern with those kids coming out, you know, mom's parked here and a car's coming this way, and somebody runs out from behind a car, it's just...
Here's my question, Josh, but only if they have a lot of teachers parked there, how that all will play out?
They'll figure it out.
I'm saying, if there's a bunch of teachers parking there, and you got parents wanting to pick kids up?
Oh, the park, parking here?
Yeah.
Oh, they, no, there would be no parking, we would not park there, that would just be a pick-up and drop-off. You know, during the day, FedEx or deliveries would, would come there, you know, the mailman, you know, if you need to come in and pick up your kid, you know, during the day, that would be available. You know, really the only times we need to worry about are seven thirty to eight, and, you know, three to three-thirty, and then the preschool times, eleven fifteen, twelve fifteen. So, yeah, there would be no, the teachers would have to park across the street or down here.
Or how about in the parking lot that we have?
Or this side? This one?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's got its own issues.
Yeah.
So, none of this can be done by us, and this is all, I think this, this is actually our property, but it's...
So, this is a city decision?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, how about upgrading the sidewalk on the east side there that runs north and south?
That's here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would also be a city issue, and again, that safe routes to schools grant could provide some of that, that's not a, I think it's a dollar-for-dollar match, you know, that, it's all money. So, that's a, that's a big deal, that's a big change. I'm not suggesting that we have to do something now or take action now, that's not, we wouldn't do anything until summer at the earliest, I would think. I wouldn't recommend changing anything until we start a new school year. It would just create too much confusion. The other thing is the three, four-way stops?
Can we talk about that for just a minute?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
The library is, the library board in the front of the library, have also wanted to move or install handicap curbing.
There's no ramp.
Right. The ramp is all the way down there?
Down here.
Yeah.
There is no, no ramp, we do need that.
So, if they put a crosswalk, that's extended curbing?
And that's an option.
Okay.
I'm not sure that's necessary.
Would that be handicap accessible?
Yeah, I think if they put a new crosswalk in with a new curb, it will be, I mean, I record and do that.
Well, that's, that's closer than where the other was.
I'm not sure if that would be good for handicap access, because they'd have to go in into the, well, they'd have to go into the street, they'd have to do something different to do that, but, yeah, that could be. I mean, we have a handicap spot identified, but there's no ramp there, so it's kind of pointless to have a handicap spot there, but at least they get to park closer if they can make it up the curb, but...
Okay, that was a question.
And I don't know that that's the best location for that crosswalk, maybe it's here, I don't, maybe that would solve it, too. So, again, the other thing they brought up was the four-way stops. This one here, Fourth and Monroe, right by the library, they did not discuss what to do with this one at Fourth and Broadway by the city hall. It's not really a school walking issue. This one here, by the auditorium in that pool parking lot, the Doran School parking lot, and the, at Sixth and Broadway, and their recommendation on, on those three are to, to make them just two-way stops, do away with the four-way stop. Some of the discussion in there was, you use a four-way stop if there's a certain threshold of traffic, none of those meet that high threshold of traffic. And the other thing about a four-way stop is, is you have a balance of traffic both ways. All three of those stops have, are heavily traveled on one way and not the other. Concern there with the school is, you know, if they're stopping there, we know they're stopping, and it's a better, and, you know, it's a controlled crosswalk, and we take out that stop, now we have to be worried about, are people going to stop when there's people in the crosswalk? Right now, I worry about kids crossing here, and people don't stop, I've seen people blow, I see people blow that stop sign there by the auditorium, you know, twice a month, because it's just a strange spot to have one. But, we're talking about seven thirty to eight in the morning, and three fifteen to three forty-five is when the concern is. I don't know what options there are to, you know, if there could be a temporary four-way stop, or, if the city would decide to do away with those four-way stops, maybe have crossing guard patrol, if the sixth graders do that on those, those intersections, which I mean a good leadership project for them anyway, but, so. As far as the citizen, when you're looking at that, you're talking an hour a day on school days, is all the time we need them, otherwise they're pointless. So, I don't have a recommendation. So I don't have a recommendation on what to do. It is a concern if they would do away with them, about the safety of our kids, but we could request that no traffic be on the roads around the schools, and that would be the safest route, but it would be the most intrusive on the public too, so you have to balance those things.
Well, living at Sixth and Main, just one more on that, I, um, I can tell you that there's a lot of people that don't pay any attention to coming into that intersection, especially when they're on Westbound, and especially after events. I can sit there any night with my blinds open and watch people run right through there, and students, I can sit there on a school day and tell you exactly which students are just gonna zip through that without paying any attention. And if they do away with the, the one at Sixth and Broadway, that's just one block farther for them to get, get up steam and go.
They wouldn't, well, they, they wouldn't, there would still be stop signs there.
Oh, it just wouldn't be east, it wouldn't be, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's what their recommendation would, not to take all the stop signs away, but just, you know, allow the traffic on Broadway to continue through those two intersections, and allow the traffic on Fourth Street to continue to Broadway.
That's much better. I, I just keep waiting for another accident happening at that corner because somebody doesn't stop.
Well, I recall back in the day, way before me, when they had the only two stoplights in town, they were them two intersections, and they had a switch that they could shut them off.
I remember that.
So it was a four-way stop when the lights were on?
But they could shut them off in the summer, or...
Right.
And if there was an activity, sometimes they had blinking, you know, blinking yellow
And I haven't researched enough to know what, you know, what's legal, what's available, I don't know the answer to that. You know, the speed limit for a school zone for specific times is, it's an easy thing to do when you have it there. It's kinda pointless, 'cause as soon as you enter the school zone, you have to stop. And you have to stop another block, so... Don't test that, just see if you hit the 20 in that block, but... So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that this is out there, and the city council has it on their agenda for tomorrow night, and I'll be available for discussion, but councilman...
So you're gonna go, there's some meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have any direct opinion, other than the one way? It sounds like you are in favor of that.
I, I am in favor of changing that, similar to what they've done there. I would like to see maybe the one way and add some more angled parking at that other crosswalk that Darren mentioned.
That's true, especially with the little kids, they pick them up. I mean, I did it too, when I was picking up the little, long-term, I picked up those ones, I mean, you're braced off Will Street, they went walking up their kid.
And it's not a, I mean, it's not a dangerous area, it's not like you're fearing for your life, it's, it just takes one situation that...
It's a lawsuit.
Let us know how it goes.
Okay, and if you have other questions on that, I'm sure that, you know, if we decide to change that, the city would want our support. And it may, it may end up that the city would like us to share in some of the cost of some of that, I don't know. The other thing I didn't mention was the, it affects our kids, but it's not really school. Adding sidewalk to the south of the library along Nerf Street, that's a challenge, 'cause there's that sharp hill right there. So you'd have to cut into that hill, put in a retaining wall. Their suggestion is just move the curb out into the street further, you know, cut into the street, that street's wide enough that they could, they could stand that to be a little more narrow. You know, we have kids walk down there to the skating rink and to the annex, especially with our after-school program, they do that regularly. They walk in the street, they go down there. So that was another issue.
Move on to communications, board work, activities and reports. Darren, anything tonight?
Nothing tonight.
Lance?
Nothing.
Sean? Aaron? Carl?
No.
Wow. Looking for me here. Christmas vacation. All right, move on to Mr. Meyer's report.
There's Mr. White.
Hey, everybody, couldn't be in board meeting tonight, I apologize for that, but I thought I'd choose short video of my board report and go over a few things, so that if, maybe I can clarify some things. If you have more questions, feel free to contact me later. First thing I would like to say is thank you guys for being on the school board. The school board appreciation month, every month should be a time that we appreciate and recognize you guys, but thank you very much for doing what you do for the community. If you looked at the board report, you saw that we have a testing coming up on February 22nd, it's NAEP testing, or N A E P, which stands for the National Assessment of Education Progress. This is a test that we were chosen for, we didn't choose to do it, but we were chosen for, and a certain percentage of the schools in the state get chosen for it, and it's what gives the state report card or the building report card that's measured on a national level. And our eighth graders will be testing on that day in both reading and/or math. We don't know for sure yet which ones, which students are, which tests, which students are gonna be given, but we know it will be math and reading, and I think it'll primarily be math. Second thing, if you looked at the school calendar, you notice that we have a lot of school activities going on. Coming up this week, we have the mid-winter classic, and if you haven't seen the bracket yet, our boys play Tuesday night, play against Larned. So we look forward to you being able to be there to enjoy that game. Lot of really good teams in this, in this tournament, so it's gonna be exciting to see what happens. The next week, our girls go to Great Van Barton County to the Hilltop Classic. The next bullet on that for activities, I'm really excited about this, Andrea's put a lot of work into it, is that we will be having our robotics tournament. We anticipate approximately 30 teams from eight schools. It will be held in the annex instead of the school, and it'll start, the doors will open up at 7:30 for teams to register and set up and everything, but the competition time will go from nine into the afternoon. Andrea said the best time, if you wanna go to just spectate, would be probably about from nine to 12. That's when you can kinda see more going on, you can go around and watch individual teams in action. We will have, I think, just one bot in that tournament, but it's an exciting, exciting honor for us to be able to have that, that tournament. If you remember right, we had a scrimmage scheduled in the fall on a Saturday, and we only had four teams that registered, so we ended up canceling that, and we changed our winter tournament to a weekday as opposed to a Saturday, after we got some feedback from other schools, and it seems to have worked, 'cause we're gonna have somewhere around eight or nine schools here, and 30, roughly 30 teams of robots. Central Plains League Junior High Basketball Tournament will be January 26th, 28th, and 31st. I don't have any information yet on when we play on those, or when our first game will be at least. Something coming up, another thing coming up this week is the school geography bee, which will be January 18th, this Friday. It will be at about 2:15 in the auditorium, and should take about 30 to 45 minutes. Encourage you to come in and see those students, that'll be for junior high students. Then on the 23rd, we have the Stafford County Spelling Bee, and it's here in St. John. And I don't, I have the time down, I don't remember that, what that is for sure, but we'll get that information out via Facebook and Twitter. And we also have a group of students going this Saturday, grades six through eight honor choir, or district choir, excuse me, will go to Dodge City to perform. So those are just, we, we do have a lot of activities going on the month of January, and some things coming up in February, so it's gonna be a pretty busy time. Plenty of opportunities for us to see our kids doing different things. Down to the next section, every year we do a Kansas Community's Care Survey, and that survey asks questions about substance abuse, suicide tendencies, things like that, bullying behaviors, and it kinda gives us a gauge for our school. It's not a, it's not a one thing tells us everything we need to know, but it's a pretty comprehensive survey. And we administered that on January 9th to grades six, eight, 10, and 12, and that's how it's done across the state of Kansas. Not every school participates in that, but a very high percentage do. And so we, we administered that, look forward to getting that. That will help us with the KISA process, and it's one of the pieces for the social-emotional character development measurement that we need for KISA, so that will help us with that. Look forward to seeing what those results show us. Last thing on the, on my report was that I had come up with a schedule and gone over with teachers and Mr. Meyer, and think this is gonna work out well. It's a two-hour delay schedule, so on the days where we have a snow day, or a snow delay for those two hours because of weather or any other reason, instead of just starting with third period, which is what we've done up to this point, we'll actually, we created a schedule where all of the teachers can see all of their classes, so the students, when they come in at 10 o'clock, will go to their first period, and they'll be in that first period for 27 minutes, and they'll go that way through the morning. Every morning class will be 27 minutes long for the high school, and then the afternoon can switch to the regular schedule. The junior high schedule, we did the same thing with, but the only difference there is, instead of eating at 11:35, they will eat at 12 o'clock, and we'll have a little bit of a conflict in the lunchroom, but we'll work that out by dismissing a little bit earlier or later, and it's just a matter of getting kids through line as quickly and organized as possible. But anyway, that's something that I think's gonna help, because it helps as a teacher to get to see every one of those kids every day, and when we have a two-hour delay, we'll now be able to do that. So like I said, if you have any questions over this, feel free to email me or call me or whatever, and thank you for, for putting in your time. Have a good evening.
Any questions about any of that? Okay, Mr. Meyer? My report, professional development, we had a, focused on just learning how to deal with kids with poverty and kids that have experienced trauma in their lives. Today, we had a poverty simulation. All of our classified staff, they were the, the helpers, so they were the banker, the jailer, the, the police, the social service worker, all of those, all of those community people. And then our teachers were families, so they all had an identified need, and they were all from poverty, maybe they had a family that had mental health issues, a family member that had addiction, or, they all had an assigned role. And what they all learned is, you know, they had to use their money to get, get to the job, to go find a job, and had to use their money to drive there every day and then pay for childcare, and they got to experience a lot of the challenges that go with being a family from poverty. And, you know, a lot of times you think, "Well, just pull yourself up by your bootstraps, you just gotta do it." "I've got kids I gotta take care of, I can't just go out and get a job," or, there's, there's other issues, and I got to be the drug dealer. So I went around and they were, you know, families were struggling, and I was able to, you know, talk them in to sell them some Sweet'N Low for me. I had little packets of Sweet'N Low and some cash, but it was interesting how they, we had fun with it, and how quickly some people would make a bad decision, 'cause I could make some quick cash like that rather than spend the whole day at work. And it was pretty eye-opening. And I think the kicker for me, after we, and some other people, actually another teacher mentioned this, I think, but, we went through all, looking at, at life through that lens, what were some of the strengths and weaknesses and opportunities and threats that you see? And for me as an individual, the things I see in our community that are opportunities or strengths would be, you know, the school, Department of Children and Families, you know, our social services, our bank, people can help. Whereas, some of the people realize that, that school I see as a threat, and DCF I see as a threat, because there's a, the most important thing to me is I keep my family together, and there's a threat that you're gonna take my kids away. And some people see the school as a threat, because I have to pony up money for the Chromebook and for the Valentine Box, and I don't have that money, and... So just thinking of that, that how do we make sure that our, the people we deal with in our community, that they don't see our school as a threat? So it was, it was really eye-opening for, for our staff. And that was the morning session, and then Rebecca Lewis, she's a, she was an individual that's part of the Circles program. We have a Circles program in our county now to build up people from poverty that want, that want out of that situation. She came up through that program in McPherson. Now she does training, she's the one that did our simulation this morning, and then she went through her story this afternoon, and just how poverty can affect the way kids learn. You know, when, when a kid is hungry every day, or is worried about being taken out of the home, or is abused, there might be a quick trigger, and we have to realize that, that you might not be able to calm down as quickly as, as my kid would. That just, just understanding those things and how we work with those kids, so... I mean, it was very, it was a very good session, and got a lot of good feedback on it, so we're gonna continue down that road. You know, kids that experience trauma, we need to understand that, and we're at that point where we're, we're trauma-aware, we understand that kids come with some, some issues there, and look more how, how we really deal with those things. We've got further training on poverty with our shared staff development in Lyons in February, and then Rebecca Lewis will come back for half a day in March to kinda follow up with what we've done, so it was really good stuff, so... Social studies textbooks, those are on the list to rotate through this summer, so we're gonna be looking at, we'll have a committee that looks at fifth grade through high school. We don't have direct social studies textbooks for younger grades, they do some of that with their reading and pull other units, but, so that'll be an expense. Spelling Bee, and Mr. White mentioned, next Wednesday. Also, I forgot our geography bee is this Friday. Elementary robotics, Mr. White mentioned, the high school robotics, our elementary kids are gonna be going to a competition on the 19th, this coming Saturday, in that city. So our sixth graders are gonna go compete, and it's kind of a volunteer thing. They spent last semester doing that, so they got into a competition. Some of our fifth graders will go with them if they, if they choose to, so we finally got those kids involved in a competition. Mr. White also mentioned the music, the KMEA music this Saturday, he said six, 12, or six through eight, and it's actually five through eight, we have some fifth and sixth graders going as well. Board appreciation? Board appreciation, you know, I sent you a note this week, I meant every word of it. Thank you for what you do, appreciate everything you do for no pay. The license plate's from PTO, probably as close as you'll get to getting paid, and you can thank the Lisa for the treats. I did not make any treats, so you're welcome. And you have some cards from the kids. This one here is, is just to everybody from our kindergarten class, I'll just pass that one around. Appreciate everything you guys do. I don't have a lot on the legislative update, the, the things that are coming up are the constitution, constitutional amendment, that'll be a topic of discussion, what happens there. Currently, I don't think there are the votes in the legislature to pass it, we'll see what happens. And looking at, at funding, according to KSB, or KSDU's recommendation on the inflation adjustment, so we're so close on the funding, one, one fix would take care of it, but there are competing interests for state funds. Higher education's been cut, social services have been cut, if there's money there, people want to see it going there as well, so it is, it's not a, not, not an easy decision. So legislative session opened today, the governor was inaugurated today. I'll be going to Topeka on Thursday for council superintendent's meeting, so we'll know more after the State of the State address on Wednesday evening, how things might, might work out.
I just, I just saw before I came in, Greg Lewis was able to be sworn in today here.
Somebody said there was a, yeah, he was sworn in by Judge Walters here in town, and they announced that, on the House, and there was a standing ovation in the House, so. So he looked good in his picture on Facebook. We have some instruments, we got the drums that Mrs. Knight has been using with her class, when we got those a few years ago. The vendors send us two sets, we've had them on pallet in our shed for two years now, trying to work with the company to take them back, then won't come get them, so it's, we've gone through three year, or two year-end cycles, and I considered them ours, so we sold them to Pratt, so they're going to come get them next week, so. We did, hoping to bid for superintendents, and they bid twenty-two hundred dollars, so. It was a, I don't know, forty, five hundred dollar drum, set of drums, they got a good deal. We have twenty-two hundred dollars, so. Recruiting Fairs, I'll be going to one in Bethany, and there's a virtual one with Fort Hayes, they don't do it on the side anymore, just for recruiting teachers. We do have some that we need to recruit that we'll talk about here in a little bit. And then Mr. White's going to go to Northwest Oklahoma State in Alba. I've gone to that one, we just haven't had luck pulling teachers from there. There hasn't been a good match with what we've needed, but with our pay, I think, the way things have been with education in Oklahoma, it's an opportunity that I think we need to keep looking at. He's in the lawn from there, so I'll go relive some old memories, maybe. That Quivera letter, Chad got a copy from Chief Engineer Barfield, and he frequently asked questions to clarify, emailed back to you. I think, I guess what we have done in getting involved is done what it needed to do, stirred up the political talk enough that they're getting the word out now about, about facts and information and how that all works out, all the specifics. I'm not an expert in that at all, but anyway, there's at least some information from the water office. We don't have to say about that. I didn't want to put this on there, but it is, boilers. You know, we've talked about our heating and air system, we need to replace boilers, that's coming up. We need to do it this summer. It's got to, it's got to come now, we're at that point. We had one, have an issue over the weekend, blew a gauge out of it, and it doesn't look good, so we've had three working boilers, one that came out and worked on and replaced some parts and didn't get it going, and weren't sure why, so our guy was working on the engineering side of that and why, and then yesterday, the one of two remaining boilers that we have working is the one that failed yesterday, so he'll be here in the morning to work on it. We've got one working that, that will heat the building, not very efficiently, but it'll heat the building. So, the one I don't know, the one he's still working on that should be working, that he can't get working, but on the phone with him this afternoon, he said they're at the end of their life, and we'll limp them through this winter. It's probably our best-case scenario. We're to the point where we're throwing good money after bad, and, but that brings up, like we've talked about, we replaced boilers, we have old air handling units and old piping, and so I've asked our committee, which is Chad and Carl, and Mitch Minus to come tomorrow around noon, he's going to be here working on them in the morning, so I'll touch base with you guys tomorrow. If any of you would like to come and listen to what he has to say, he's going to take some time to visit, but just about our situation there, so. We'll have some decisions to make, I think, sooner than we wanted to make them. I did see some emails from a superintendent that their boilers were not working, and they did not have a plan to get out of it, and they were looking for places to send their kids to school, and I don't know what they ended up working out, I've seen that on the news, I think they found a different solution, but we sure don't want to be in that spot.
Okay. Mr. Meyer? Executive session tonight?
Probably ten minutes, unless, somebody's got more.
Ten minutes, good for everyone.
We can add one to it.
All right, we'll start out with that.
Mr. President, I move the board to go into the executive session to discuss.
Back in the open session, anything on a motion to approve Mr. Meyer's contract?
Mr. President, I move the board to approve the superintendent's two-year contract as presented.
Second.
Moving second, the board approved the superintendent's two-year contract as presented. On paper, aye.
Aye.
Pose, nay. Motion carried, seven, zero. Other recommendations, Mr. Meyer?
I recommend that the board approve the resignation of Denise Miller effective at the end of the school year.
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, and the board approved the resignation of Denise Miller, effective at the end of the school year, on paper, aye. Pose, nay. Motion carried, seven, zero.
I'll just have a resignation letter here for Mr. Mike Simpson, so I'd recommend the board accept his resignation, effective at the end of this school year.
Move. Second.
Moving second, and the board accept Mike Simpson's resignation, effective at the end of the school year, on paper, aye. Pose, nay. Motion carried, seven, zero. Future agenda items?
We have Mr. White's contract to formally approve, and then our calendar, I'm not sure if we have that next month or in a future meeting, and then we'll discuss any curriculum changes that we might be looking at.
All right, motion for adjournment? Move adjourn.
Second.
Moving second, we adjourn. Paper, aye?